Officially live. Alright, so, welcome to the show. So I'm really excited to have you on. This is your first time. On running for Boston City Council. Shocked, but I was shocked when I saw the announcement. And so, what has been the response been from people once you drop? The big news?
Yeah, um, a lot of people were shocked because even though I'm outside a lot, I go to a lot of events. I am still in my heart of hearts an introvert. But uh, public service is very important to me. Um, it's my job and now I'm um, trying to do it uh, in a larger. Way, um, so. Yes, people have been so encouraging, um, my job, my family. Just people in the community, um, social media. People have been extremely supportive and encouraging. Um, I've talked to a couple of people who have run before and served before and they've been incredibly helpful. With being really transparent about the experience, how much it takes to run. You know, how exhausting it can be, all those things, so.
But you're not listening, uh, you're not listening. You're just like, so it it feel it feel like a leap. Was it a leap or is it something you thought about?
It was a leap, both, um, I've been thinking about it for a very long time. I'm the type of person, like, before I make a big jump. I think about it for a long time, like, like, for example, buying a car. Or like, I have to drive every single car or buying a house. I have to look at every house. So it's been in my mind. Um, for a while, I toyed around with it. I thought about the pros and cons. I look at what's happening on the local political scene. I ask myself. Do I want to be a part of this right now? All the things, um, but there's, you know, there were a lot of push factors. Um, as far as me making a choice at this particular time.
And now it's official. You said yes. I mean, we have a lot, a lot of different organizations. My belief along with them is that when women run, women win. And it's one of my goals for people to get used to seeing women from all backgrounds and shades running for office. Like literally for me, just by running, you won and others who were thinking will also take the leap where nobody is ready, women running. And a lot of when I look at our community and communities globally, I think you know, women are really running regardless of titles, whether they have titles or not. And you fit that description where I feel like you've always been involved, like literally, I think. Even in the last few years pandemic or no pandemic, like I feel like you're immersed in the community. And so I feel the love you feel for where you live, for the city. And so, you know, at first I was just like, you know, did you, because you know, Boston has its own perception out in the world. I think I shared the interview that a mayor did on um, on, on the Daily Show. And so people still think of Boston this way. But I'm sensing because you've been here, you're a lifelong resident. Do you, was there a time when you're like, when did you fall in love with Roxbury or even Boston as a city?
Yeah, yeah, um, I think, I mean, yes, as you've said, I've always loved my town, my neighborhood, um, but I did go away temporarily for grad school. I went to Florida all the way to the tip of the south uh, for two years um, for grad school. And then I kinda had to think about like where I wanted to. Once I finished school, I had to figure out if I wanted to go back home or go somewhere else or stay in Florida. Um, so I decided to just come back, you know, it's easy. For me, most of my family was still there, so it was easier for me to just come back and just like figure out uh, what I wanted to do, um, as far as like locationally where I wanted to be. Um, so it was, it's a totally different experience living in Boston as like a young adult. I had, I had a great childhood there, but you know, having, coming back, you know, leaving. Um, you know, having like a coming of age through grad school and then coming back. Uh, that's, I think that's when I fell in love with my neighborhood. That's when I started to become more engaged in like volunteering and um, I just, um, I interacted with this with Roxbury in a totally different way. Um, I think before that stage, a lot of Roxbury was pouring a lot into me. And then I came back and I felt compelled to, you know, give of myself and lend my talents to making Roxbury a better place.
I love that because there are a lot of things going on in Boston and I think when people visit they don't always choose Roxbury as one of the hotspots that people tourists would choose to come to and I don't know where it's advertised. And so to see how even living it for a long time, like this is literally, I'm the same. This is the place where it's always been home. And so you would think you're not discovering new things, right? And so I think through you and so many different groups you part of, where I'm like uh, we discovered the library or the bookstore, things that you pass by and you don't think about going in for different activities or things that are bordering Roxbury, but new things that are opening up, people starting um, new businesses or we're being, or we, you know, we go through bittersweet in terms of things closing, but there's a rebirth I see in the square, for lack of a better word. And so with your campaign, for example, what would you say, like, what is your vision for the district, but specifically for that community?
Yeah, um, so my official campaign motto is uh, our community, our legacy. Um, I really want people to be, I want us all to be able to be proud of where we're from and where we live. Um, Roxbury, a lot of people don't know, but Roxbury has a very long history of activism and self-determination. Um, in the eighties and nineties, uh, a lot of uh, businesses used Roxbury as a dumping ground. Illegal dump, a lot of illegal dumping, dumping happened there. But the people of Roxbury um, organized to, you know, to fight it. You know, I was like very grassroots organizing. Some of those organizers are still alive today. We know about Mel King, um, who has passed, but um, there are some, some of our, you know, freedom fighters are still alive today and that we can still talk to, which is awesome. Uh, um, but yeah, I envision an empowered, thriving neighborhood where you know, people can afford to live here generationally, you know, your, your, you, your kids can live here. Um, and, and just inherit that legacy and be happy and healthy and really engage with the community. I imagine a lot of third spaces, you know, that are available to the community to access a lot of green space. Us growing our own food and not being completely dependent on, you know, mass production. I imagine a lot of things. My vision evolves like daily. I've talked to more and more people. Cause I have my own perspective, but depending on who I talk to and what their perspective is, that adds to like what I, what my vision is, so.
I'm there. So what have you been hearing? Because you know, usually people talk about being on the, you know, stumping ground when you out there. What have people been saying that's a priority? Because we literally, I think we're still in a pandemic. Some people think we away from it and there are still big issues and you know the time that we're living in right now. What are people saying that's like, those are priorities in terms of we gotta do something about these issues. If there were three that you hear often as you out there campaigning, what are you hearing?
Yeah, yeah, obviously housing, like that is huge. Um, we know that Boston is one of the most expensive cities to live in. Um, in a lot of regards, but especially for housing, we're always like top five. Well, we're right now, we talk between like number one and number two. It's like, so that is like a huge, um, that's a, that's a, that's a big one. That's a hot topic. Um, that, you know, due to the, a lot of gentrification occurring in this area, there's been a lot of displacement. Um, people are just trying to hold on, you know, renters, owners, everybody's trying to hold on. Um, and I, I want us to, you know, it's good to survive and be able to be alive. But I want us to transition to like a thriving existence instead of just trying to survive. Um, there's been a lot of initiatives that at, uh, at the state and city level recently too. Um, that are trying to alleviate um, the pressure that the housing market is placing on everyday people. Um, but we're gonna need like, oh, it's, it's an all hands on deck thing. Everybody has to be um, advocating for us to be able to afford to still live here.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough. I mean, I think New York, probably San Francisco, we're competing with those, but even within the state, Boston itself. And there were areas that would be considered affordable. And you see now, and it's interesting, every time I see new buildings, I'm thinking it's gonna be an affordable building and it's not, um, and it's literally borderline in areas that people didn't even find appealing to consider at home. To even send their kids to school or to even come shopping. You know what people do every day here. Um, even though I know some people have stayed here, like they never left. Now, the community look very different. Like even when you went to school, came back. Every time I think it's always going through its own seasons and change. And then also that's the beauty of also seeing different people running because those who are running back in the day, probably before we were even born has not really changed in terms of the face of the city may have changed depending on where you go. Based on those issues you mentioned, whether it's dumping or so many different things. The, those who are struggling, the face of those who face the harshest um, conditions here have not drastically changed. And so as you think of yourself as a leader, because I know even if you see the solutions. Um, yourself as you're approaching this, are there comparison to you in terms of things you face as a leader that prepare you for this role? Because I'm sure there will be challenges. Where as much as you love it, as much as you see change is possible. The challenges are gonna come hard. So was it anything that got in your way, growing up? Being in this community or when you were not here, that kinda shaped who you are now, just say, whatever comes your way, you can, you can handle it.
Yeah, um, so my work, you know, like my daily work at with Boston Public Schools has definitely um, contributed to who I am as an advocate. Originally, so I work in the central office building, which was originally located downtown. I started working there in two thousand seven. And uh, so I started in July of two thousand seven and the month before um, the then-serving mayor Manino um, had this vision um, about revitalizing Lee Square. So it was called his Lee Square vision. And part of that vision was moving BPS Central Office into Roxbury so that families could have better access and wouldn't have to take off a day of work to go downtown and um, fix whatever issues they were experiencing. Um, so I didn't believe that it would happen because at that time nobody, like besides the people that love Roxbury and live there, it wasn't uh, like a high, high demand place, like people didn't really come there, like to, you know, after work, hang out, unless you live there. That's not the general sentiment, at least not what I felt from like other parts of the city. Uh, when you say you lived in Roxbury. Um, but it did happen, um, in twenty fifteen, we moved from downtown into Roxbury. So now I'm living and working in Roxbury, like so I'm in my community all day, every day. Um, I'm talking to families, they, it's easier for them to reach us and talk to us and tell us what they're struggling with. Um, I'm in the middle, I'm right in Nubian Square, so I'm seeing everything that's going on, good and bad. Um, is right outside my window at work. Um, so all of that kind of just you know, have, being in my community full time, like it totally changed my life. It changed my perspective. It changed what I pay attention to. It changed how I understood unmet need. It just totally changed my whole focus. Um, and that, so, so all of that. And then I'm also a member of the Boston Teachers Union. So I've been a general member for ten years and then this year my colleagues elected me to serve as building representative. So that is like an advocacy role. Uh, you know, if there's any, um, if there's any issues within my team and between my team and management. I, you know, I advocate for them. If they attend any meetings with management, if they want me to go with them and advocate for them, if they just want me to be there as moral support. Um, to advise them, that's what I do. So that's in addition to my full-time job, I do that. So that definitely shaped more of like an advocacy role, um, conflict resolution, negotiation, all of those things. All of those skills were, have been refined. So that's in the past year. Um, so that, all of these experiences helped me think more and more about how I can use these skills now to serve the wider community. Um, and then last year, my sister who lives in Foxborough ran for school committee. They have an elected school committee, so I served on her campaign. Um, I, the math ain't math, I still don't know how she ran. She has three kids, she just had another baby. She has three daughters. Uh, she was working, her husband, her husband was very supportive, but she was wearing all these hats and she was still an amazing candidate. Um, and it was an honor to serve. On, that was my first time serving on a campaign. Yeah, here I am. So she's always encouraged me to run. I'm like, girl, no, this is your time. I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna support you as best I can. Uh, but no, and uh, so election day, you know, we were out at that, so they, it's Foxborough, so it's small. They have one polling place. Which is a high school. So we campaigned there all day and we stayed out there until the last ballot was counted. Um, she didn't win, but she did very well as some, as a new to Foxborough candidate. You know, town politics, they are very, yeah, it's different. It's a, it's a different arena. Uh, they're, they're very, sometimes uh, in town politics is a lot, there's a strong resistance to change. And a um, mistrust of difference. You know, and my sister, you know, she doesn't look like the typical demographic. So that, uh, that was met with all types of different responses. There was a cohort of people that really supported her. Which was very refreshing to see. They wanna see good change, you know, they want people on the school committee that represent um, a diverse background. Um, and then there's other contingents who didn't want that. So it was a very interesting experience.
Yeah, but I'm sure she's, again, this is not things you wanna get used to. But I think we are accustomed to hard, right? Think of our ancestors, when you think of your parents and families in terms of very little you can think of that just fell on your lap, that you didn't have to fight for. And so a campaign, it's probably, it's hard. But this is something literally, I think, most were built for. Even though you may not choose to run in terms of publicity, but a lot of the work, like I said, behind the scene. It's really on the backbone of usually women and other groups. Represented in those positions, but they are doing the work in the community. And so that tradition, um, I think as I see your campaign, but also thinking in addition to your sister, like who else have influenced you to, to, to take that leap and, and in a way like you running, you're not just running for yourself, right? You're running also for those, those people.
Yeah, there have been a lot of local leaders especially, um, that have inspired me. Um, a lot of the people that I went to school with, I went to Boston Latin School, a lot of them are in government now, uh, Ruth C. Louie Jean, I'm so proud of her. We used to take the bus home. The MBTA home together, you know, like, so it's amazing to just see how she has flourished, how much of an advocate she is for all of us. Cause she's at-large counselor and she's city council president. Um, so she is just, she's an inspiration. Every time I see her, I embrace her. I tell her how proud I am of her. Um, she's amazing. Andrea Campbell, our attorney general. Um, also was in homeroom with her at Boston Latin School. Um, yeah, there's a lot of Roxbury people too. Liz Miranda, Senator Miranda, like amazing.
A lot of great role models, actually in recent years. I mean, the council has changed. Different backgrounds. They're fighting for everyone, every resident in the city. About your family, how have they responded? Besides your sister, you already know the drill.
They're so excited and happy. So we're like, all of us, all of my siblings, we used to all be in Boston, so now we're scattered about, right? So, um, my parents are still here though. They're very excited. My dad, um, is my campaign chair. Um, he's amazing. He's, I call him my life coach. And now he's made the pivot of like from life coach to campaign coach. And you know, he teaches political science, so he's like in his element and it's really nice to see like, these are the things you need to do. And like, he's a great coach, like he's a coach anyway, but like yeah, it's, it's amazing to see. It's very exciting to see that he is really like taking this seriously and he's like very proud and that's very exciting. My mom is very proud as well. Um, she's, she says that she always saw these traits in me, but she wanted to, um, she didn't wanna like pressure me. Like she wanted me to come about to the decision myself. Um, and then support me when I made that decision. And that's, both of my parents tend to be like that. They don't really put too much pressure. They'll put like a bug in your ear and then they'll leave you alone and let that bug do what it needs to do. And then when you say, okay, once you finally make a decision, then they'll put everything, they'll support you all the way. That's been really exciting, um, and great.
That's beautiful. I think to have that support and again, to still do it, even though it wasn't something where you planned since you were five, you're like, one day I'm gonna. And there've been some great people. I mean, I even think of former counselor, uh, Tito Jackson, who's now active, yes, that's good. Still active in the community, still doing amazing things. And the one thing again, in terms of you and others that I've seen, right? It's that you're not gonna be seen now, right? So I see a lot of faces sometime where I'm like, who is this person? So even if they've been living here.
People have been texting me, asking me who people are. I'm like, this is so and so. They're like, no, who is?
But you don't have that issue because again, you regardless of what's been happening, like you've been present in public and involved. Um, different time of the year, whether it's event and so on. And so I think it's a beautiful thing to have been living here and still being active in different ways. And I think that's the thing also with people now, where it's like you can be part of organization, you can be on the board, you can be part of the teacher. And I think it's a great example to show we all have a role to play. It doesn't always mean public office, but public office is always an, uh, an option. And I love seeing different people who did not go to law school, did not live in a political family.
Yes, that's so important. And that, yeah, I'm learning that more and more. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You don't need no suit to run. You don't need a degree to run. You don't need the smooth words to run, like your passion, your knowledge, your plan. And just, you, yeah, that's, that's, that's the starting point. And then you just build from there. You don't, I, and I think it can be intimidating because sometimes you're like, oh, this person has so much more experience. They're so polished. They're so, but I, my, like for people's, your story is what's gonna draw me in. And that story does not necessarily have to be like you know, school is fine, college is great, but you don't need that to run.
But that's a message where it hasn't always been out there because you see. Right? So it's like, there's a certain type, like so many things, that's the type. And so as of representation and who people have been seeing in leadership position. Leadership position that they think, ooh, I have to be that. And I think you saw that I posted, uh, when the mayor was on the show in terms of her, it's like, till this day, I'm sure there are some people who are like, how? Could this happen? Because she doesn't fit the mold, right? And even that is still shocking till this day. I mean, I'm hoping again, she won't be the first and the last and that others will choose to run. You know, there was a time I did see so many candidates running even though none made it, many made it very close. Many are still involved in different organization and politics in some shape or form. But that, those have always been around, also will have that opportunity. And so when you think of who you're gonna be working with, for example, because I am now in the state of as if you are city council. We did the, you know, inauguration, which I've always loved watching them going in. It's like what we're dealing with right now. So what would you be focusing on those first three months in office? Cause you mentioned some, but what are the thing where you're like, we gotta, I'm gonna go in on those are gonna be the priorities. I'm focusing.
Yeah, yeah. I think right now, and I've heard this sentiment, it's not just me saying this, um, right now, our community is very disappointed, um, a lot of like, you know, heartbroken, there's a lot of trauma based on what has happened. Um, there's a lot of mistrust, there's a lot of skepticism about what happens in leadership. And we're definitely gonna have to work on building back trust. Um, you know, between, you know, we are supposed to, we work for the people, like we're supposed to be representing them well, advocating for what they want. And I think right now the trust level is not where it needs to be. So we're gonna have to whoever, I mean, it's not just on the counselor. We as a community have to do what it takes to get that trust back. Um, obviously, uh, how, like I said, housing is like a big priority, so I'm definitely focusing on that. Um, one thing that is like really, really in my heart that's troubling me, um, is that, I don't know if you know this, but the Boston Public Health Commission did a study a couple of years ago that concluded that there's a life expectancy gap between Roxbury and the Back Bay of like twenty-three years. Um, so they, um, they started this new initiative, I think they started it this year called Live Long and Well. Which is supposed to um, shrink that um, disparity. Um, so definitely focusing on quality of life in this district, like it needs to be especially high. But there are a lot of things getting in the way of that happening, the stress of housing instability. Um, you know, even though, you know, violence is not what it used to be, we still experience that. Um, economic instability, those are all things that we have to tackle right away.
Enjoy it. I mean, I think collaboration and also really thinking of even young people in terms of that process, because I know we've lost so many of our, our leaders, uh, whether at, you know, I'm thinking the state house, I'm thinking, um, even you mentioned, um, I'm, I'm drawing a blank, so many different individuals where they're no longer here and the work has to continue. But and the idea of, of, of help, right? Because a lot of those communities, we're talking a change in zip code, we're talking one bus ride away. I think the thing that was done between Roxbury and Cambridge. So if you take the sixty-six to Cambridge, the changes that you see between Boston, Brooklyn, Cambridge. Back Bay is the same. If you stay on the orange line or we stay on the thirty-nine, even though those buses only kinda go through JP instead of Roxbury per se. That you see happen as you're going down Huntington, which is still pass by Roxbury a little bit. Quickly the changes happen the moment you get to Back Bay Station, right? This is that, that little corner and it, it changes block by block and zip code by zip code in terms of that difference. But also when we think of health as a whole, right? So it's not just like life expectancy, but we're also thinking of mental health. As you think even of yourself, like how would you model that? Like as you, you lived here, you know what it's like. Like how can something like that be actually be modeled that it's a priority, but not just something we talk about and do a report from the Department of Public Health, but how is that truly gonna be integrated? Because one of the things I'm sure is part of the trust is there's a lot of talking, right? A lot of talk about what's gonna be changed, especially when you grew up and you've been part of things for a very long time. So how, how will you make it different in terms of you, how you practicing that yourself in terms of what does that even mean within that community, um, a long life, right? Um, and then for yourself, like how you're doing that yourself to ensure that you yourself has a long life, but all residents can also have that, that chance.
Yeah, I think, I think a key fact, well, key factors are early intervention and preventative care. I mean, whether it's physical or mental health. Um, I don't think enough of, I know enough, not enough of that is happening in our community. Um, and, um, the, the way that I would model that, I mean, there's you know, just in our cohort alone, we have colleagues who have be, started, you know, organizations, nonprofits. Because they saw that unmet need of, you know, or they experienced a mental health challenge and the support wasn't as what, what they really needed to get. So they were compelled to, you know, find the resources and make sure that nobody else had to suffer the way that they did. Um, so I think we need to partner better with particularly organizations of color that prioritize mental health. Um, particularly for our demographic that reside in, in this community and other communities. Um, but I, it's interesting, I was talking to, um, um, a mental health therapist yesterday who, who has run before, Dr. Brandy Brooks. And she was telling me, make sure you take care of yourself, stay hydrated. And she was telling me, make sure you take care of yourself, stay hydrated. Um, yeah, and that's really important, you know, that's super important. Um, I, I'm, I'm keeping my family close, like Monday was like a really rough day. Um, but I was able to talk, you know, talk to somebody about what I experienced and they're like, did you eat? Did you, are you okay? Like, so, you know, making sure like your basic needs are taken care of. Like everybody deserves to have their basic needs taken care of.
I'm glad you, you practicing it because I think a lot, because you're so passionate and dedicated to the community. Like I've seen a lot of people burn out doing that. You're in the school system, a lot of our teachers, a lot of our health workers, a lot of parents struggling a lot and doing all those things at the same time, just the way you talk about your sister. It's not uncommon. This is day, this is not, okay, for a few months is this way, this is non-stop. Even when I think about, another big issue I saw that was coming up was maternal health. In terms of the help of those parents, both, you know, whoever's in, or parents in terms of how are they being cared for or caregivers, are they being cared for? And for those who are in leadership, because sometime those, I think we, I would, they will qualify as our, our strong friends or strong people where you just do, 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 right? And until something happened and then you realize, wow, um, you were doing too much. And I think based on what you sharing in terms of having that support system now, that you had that support system in place, but also sharing with, with other people that we don't practice self-care and mental health in isolation, especially now there are people who may not be out there. Um, I know we talk about housing, health is a big issue, access to so many different things. Um, what, what are you seeing about the immigrant population and refugee population with, there's more of a anxiety, I would say, because of this transition that we in right now. Like how do they fit in terms of the council vision or your vision in terms of part of, you know, they're part of our city and neighborhood? Are there things being done specifically to address then?
That's, that's huge because, yeah, a lot of Roxbury is of Caribbean descent. Um, all, all over the Caribbean and African descent, Kavertian. Um, and when, you know, I'm the child of an immigrant, and when our immigrant family doesn't feel safe, then they, they're afraid to access the resources that they need to have a good quality of life. Maybe students are not going to school, maybe you're not going to your doctor's appointments because you're afraid, you know? So it's, it's a, it's a huge issue. Um, so I will always advocate for, for protections for our immigrant population. It's incredibly important. They are contributors to, you know, they come here, they contribute to our society, they contribute to the economy. They work, we work. So it's, it's important that um, this district and every district in Boston is safe for, no matter where you come from, no matter what your status is. Um, there's nobody who is undeserving uh, of protection and of the right to feel safe. Where you, where you live, where you work.
Big one. And I think, yeah, the idea also all of our, you know, residents, whether you in a position of leadership or not, to just that reminder, like especially again, this is a city where you don't have to be an immigrant per se to feel like you don't belong and that's a huge issue. Across every block, every street in terms of that reminder though, for people to know that you belong here, we want you here, and for people to know they can come to school here, raise their families and stay. Nothing came back, but some people won't come back. And so people to come into the city and be part of giving it life. And so I'm hoping your campaign is all part of that tradition, new energy into the city. And so for the people who are like, I wanna be involved, this sound really exciting. Like how can they find out more about your campaign and get involved however they can?
Yeah, um, yes, obviously I have a website, a campaign website, it's vote for TishadCourt.com. Um, I can, I can give you all the links. Um, I'm also on social media. I have a Facebook page. Instagram is Court for D Seven and uh, X is Court D Seven. Um, so on my website, um, there, there's an opportunity to sign up for my newsletter. Um, the first issue has not gone out yet, but it will be going out soon. And that way you all can um, see what I've been doing, you know, where I am in the community, what's coming up for the following month. I also post that same information on my social media. Yeah, and if you, um, oh, I have, uh, my email is court.dseven@gmail.com. If you have any questions, suggestions, if you wanna meet for coffee, I'm, I'm totally available and accessible to you all. Um, I work for you all. It doesn't, uh, me being elected to this role is not a prerequisite for me working for you all. Um, I am here, I, when I, I always said it, if I decide to run, it's not for clout. It's not as a launchpad to a next position, like it will be for the people. Like that's why I'm doing this. So I wanna be available to you all. And it's important that I know your hopes and dreams for this city so that I can be advocating for that wherever, you know, wherever I go.
So on the campaign trail, and so I know like a lot of people sometime where it's like, you know, there's, there's still that question and voting is still a thing here where it's not an automatic So for someone who's still like, I don't know.
Register to vote. And I've talked, I have, I have talked to some constituents who are registered voters, but they haven't voted in a couple of years because they're, and that's why I wanted to acknowledge the disappointment that people are feeling and, uh, um, I get it, I do understand, but we have power. There is hope. I know there's a lot, especially happening at national level and you guys are like, what the heck? You know, I, I understand. I understand, but we do have power. My years in the union have taught me the power of collective action, the power of direct action. We just negotiated a contract with many things in it that they said was impossible, it would never happen, but it did because we collectively decided that it would. Um, so I wanna do the same thing for my district. Um, I know that sometimes, you know, given everything that's going on, we feel powerless, we feel like that one vote doesn't make a difference, but it does. We're in budget season right now. Um, this whole weekend city council has been, they all, they've been talking about is the budget. What they did, they, they decide how the money is allotted, where it goes, which schools it goes to, which communities it goes to. And that affects our lives directly. So you, you vote those people in, you vote those officials in. Um, so it, your vote does count, like believe me, I, I wouldn't lie.
So on the campaign trail, I'm hoping there'll be more interaction with you. You already out there. So you'd be like, they can find you at the library, they find you at the bookstore, they can find you on the street.
Yeah, yeah. And I usually, like if I'm gonna go to an event, I usually post a lot. So yesterday I went to Governor Healy's, um, Governor Healy has a, um, Council for Black Empowerment. Um, and that was at Twelve Baptist, so I posted it and then I went yesterday and I was able to talk to constituents, other people, other candidates, other people in the community who wanna see, you know, better for their district. So it was great. And I want to see all of you there too. It's not just about me. Um, there's decisions being made that are gonna affect you all directly. So it's important that um, you have a voice, you have a say. That's, that's what I want. It's not just about my vision, this is our vision, um, that we can work on together.
Yes, I love it. So our vision, our legacy and again, it's time to go beyond struggling for finally to truly be thriving for years, for years to come. And so I'm excited, as I mentioned, for you. I can't wait to celebrate and say our new District Seven Council woman.
Thank you so much.
And, and all the others who are really rooting for you. And so, you know, continue spreading the word, spreading the message and just letting us know where do we go to cast that vote, but to also get the conversation going for people to be excited now, not just on the day of or the day before, for them to go voting. But I know you're gonna be everywhere, but again, practicing, taking care of yourself.
Yes, I'm gonna really be intentional about that because it is, it's, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot of work. Um, it feels really good doing it, but I know that for me to be the best candidate, I need to, I have to take care of myself.
It's all part of the package. So congratulations, I'm gonna check the website and share it. Forward to seeing you on the campaign trail. And then sharing more as you're having conversation with people to be able to document that and sharing that and for people to see that. Always see enough of it. And so hopefully there'll be more coverage, the newsletter is gonna be coming out. And so I'm looking forward to that big day where it is official, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, it's, it's really amazing. So I can't wait.